Good evening. Happy Solar Eclipse Day. Thank you for, folks, for scheduling around our opportunity to witness the eclipse today. I'd like to begin first with a roll call. We have Councillor Matt Powers, Councillor Jacob Baker, Councillor Leo Kenny, Councillor Sarah Marks, Councillor Sonia Bertholz, Councillor Rob Larway, and myself, Dan Demerit. And welcome to the Monday, April 8, 2024 Town Council Meeting, the Orno Town Council. I'd like to begin with agenda review. I have a couple items, but I want to ask if anyone has anything. Any council members have anything in terms of agenda review? I would like to, just for a purpose of notification, for those tuning in, order, I will ask when we get to Order 2460 to refer that to the Finance and Operations Committee. That's the settlement ordinance that we had a public hearing on last month. We're still doing some work on that issue, and it's not ready for finalization. I would like to pull Order 2456, the Riverside Cemetery, from the consent agenda to discuss some of the input we got over the weekend and recently, since we had that committee meeting on that item last week, and get an update from some folks on the, some staff. And finally, I would like to add, and we have to do this, we have to all agree, do we need a motion to add something to the agenda? I would entertain a motion to add Order 2460, or Resolve 2463 to the agenda, a resolve endorsing the... It's now 2463. Resolve endorsing the Traffic Safety Education Enforcement Initiative developed by the Orno Police Department.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? We can do that by show of hands, right? That's a unanimous vote in favor of adding that to our agenda. That'll be Resolve 2463. I would say, just in terms of agenda review, I shared some information with councillors earlier today. We have a couple items on our agenda having to do with appointments that ultimately we'll have to, I'll get to those when we get to those, but we have a couple changes we need to make in our ordinances regarding the committees that we staff and that are listed in our ordinance, but as a matter of practice, aren't, one of them's not. We've combined them as a matter of practice, but it needs to be updated in the ordinance, and that, we can't, we shouldn't do that in two minutes on a, in a council meeting. So with that, we will then move to the approval of minutes for March 11, 2024, March 20, 2024, and March 25, 2024. I've got four sets. Is there another set, two?
There were two sets on the 20th.
Okay, two sets on the 20th. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any changes or additions or suggestions for the minutes? All in favor of approval of the minutes? And the record will reflect that was unanimous vote. Next is a public comment, and we're going to do public comment a little differently this time. Public comment is a chance for those, anyone who wished to speak on an item that's not on our agenda, raise their hand and have a brief opportunity to address the Town Council Chair on items not on the agenda. Anyone who does want to partake in public comment, we're going to ask to provide a name and an email address if you'd like to, so that if we have an, if we have information, we want to get back to you after your comments, we'd have a way to do that. So is there any public comment today? Do you want to wait till the agenda item? Yep, you're at the top. You're the first item in new business, so it'll be pretty quick. So, okay? Yeah, it's 6:30, right? Yep. We'll get to, yeah, we'll get to you quickly. And is there, Pete, is there anybody online? Or anybody with their hand raised online? I'm sorry, I need to ask that question, so does not.
Right, no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Pete. All right, we'll close the public comment, and we'll move on to public hearings. There are none, I don't see, I don't see Pat, right? So there are none scheduled, no public hearings. Acknowledgement by council members, and we'll start, I think, this time on, is it this side of the table? Matthew Powers, what would you like to acknowledge?
Sure, I'd like to acknowledge the Junior High Show Choir. They had a great year, and I just want to acknowledge Tina Burns for her role in taking that up and having them, and also her daughter Stella Burns, who helped with the choreography, and they actually won an award for their choreography, and Stella also won an award for her singing. So I just wanted to say thank you to them.
Councillor Baker?
Yeah, so I would like to acknowledge town staff. I know you get acknowledged a lot, but probably not enough. In my first month, there's been quite a learning curve to this position, and you all have been incredibly helpful in answering any question, and just truly appreciate everything that you all do.
Councillor Kenny?
Yes, I wanted to acknowledge a community member, I think her name is Belinda. I don't know her last name, but who is, who shows up at all of our meetings and participates, and I just want to acknowledge that. Much appreciated.
Councillor Marks?
Okay, so I definitely want to be sure we acknowledge the High School Show Choir also, because they also had an amazing performance, and that was wonderful. We have one of the judges here, by the way. Thank you, Kami, for that. I also wanted to just acknowledge Chief Merrill and the staff at the Police Department on their really rapid response to the bus safety issue, really incredible. And then just in general, to acknowledge the arts in Orno, I know we have folks here who've served on the Stillwater Community Arts for years and brought us so many wonderful arts projects. This weekend, we also had the Orno Arts Project had their first event at the Keith Anderson. I think it showed up on the news, so some people probably saw that clip, and that was really great, a new thing in town. And at the Potluck, we had our first youth performance of music there. So Juno Shepherd and Sophia in fifth grade brought us a string trio performance. So thanks to all the musicians and artists in our town who really make it such a great place to live.
Councillor Bertholz?
Sarah stole mine with the trio of youth musicians. That was really delightful, but I guess I will add happy Eid to, or Eid Mubarak to those for whom this is an important week marking the end of Ramadan.
I have none at this time.
None at this time? I will, I'll acknowledge that this past two weeks or so has been my favorite two weeks as a member of the Orno Town Council. I think that I've been really excited about the opportunities and the way that staff have helped us respond to people who come to the council with questions, concerns, everything from the Arts of Palooza agenda item that we'll be talking about tonight, the walk-through in the Webster neighborhood where, you know, there's 20 of us and Councillor Kenny in a particularly poorly chosen piece of footwear, but for the muddy conditions, but it was, it was a phenomenal, and then the work that's been done with the public safety response. This has just been across the board. A lot of people are, their voices are being heard by the town of Orno, and I really appreciate all, it takes a lot of work to make those things happen, so I'm grateful for everyone who's contributing. So that will close out public acknowledgements by council members. Item seven, we have no unfinished business. Item eight is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we adopt orders in block and without taking them up separately. So I would ask for a motion to move the consent agenda.
Did you say we needed to take the cemetery off the consent agenda first?
Yeah.
So that's already done?
Nope. Did I miss something? Approved consent, oh, okay, so we will approve consent agenda items 24 through 47, 2447 through 2457, excluding Order 24-56. Thank you to both Shelley and Sarah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The unanimous, the record will show that we had a unanimous adoption of the consent agenda. The first item for new business, so do the cemetery piece first?
Yes.
So sorry. Connie, you're going to be second. I'm sorry. Order is Order 2456, approving the Riverside Cemetery as presented by staff. I'll share that I asked to bring this off the consent agenda. We heard from a couple different constituents by email following, we had a committee meeting on this last week where our Parks and Director, our Parks and Rec Director did an excellent job sharing that the process, the, that she led to get a name, you know, names, identify names and rank names for the naming of, of the cemetery, the Riverside Cemetery lanes, I guess, or they're not really roadways, but... And then we heard back from a couple people about it, and I, I wanted to be able to talk a little bit about what the process had been, that, you know, something had, something has wound up on our agenda, and it wasn't clear to me, and I, a year, just over a year into this, and how it, how it ended up being that we had this on, on the council's agenda, and that it was a, how the process began. So I'd ask staff to kind of give us, there are two things we want to talk about. One is the logistics of having signage placed and what that will do for access to the, to the cemetery, and then also how the process began. So we just have a, have a conversation about that. So with that, Megan, could you introduce yourself? And thank you.
Yes. Hi, everyone. Megan Mizella, Parks and Rec Director. The start of this process started with a member of the public who went out to the cemetery and was volunteering their time to help the Public Works Department raise the cemetery, the military markers, which is something placed around gravestones that members of the military have. So this person was going around kind of fixing these things up and was often approached by members of the public and folks looking for their loved ones in the cemetery as to where they were, if he knew anything, what that sort of thing was, and he often found himself leaving his workstation, walking the people over to where they were asking to be if he knew of that. So that person had brought their concerns to the council at the time and to the town manager at the time. When this concern was shared with staff, staff had some understanding that it is challenging to describe where things are in the cemetery without distinct names for places. So given that this is a staff concern and was a public concern, as the Parks and Rec Director, I was directed to work with the Historical Society to create a list of names that would be presented to the public. And Dan, as you'd mentioned, there was a little bit of a time gap in that, in those things happening. This project was discussed last March, I believe, at a council meeting, and I'm happy to fact-check that for folks as well. So that had, that's when it was brought to the attention. I was asked to be a part of the project during the early summer and got a lot of that information gathered. Parks and Rec ramps up significantly in the fall. So my time in this project had to be tabled to handle the Parks and Rec responsibilities. That is my main task. So once the season ended, I already had a lot of the information gathered from the fall from that time and was able to collect that information and present it to council in the spring. There is also kind of an excitement of, well, if I present it in the spring and people are able to view these names, construction can happen in the spring as well. So not to bring it in January per se, where this was a little bit more continuous for, for the public interested and wanting to see this change happen in a more constructive timeline. So that was the reason for the, the gap there. Dan, you asked two questions. That's a bit of the history. Can you remind me of your second question?
I just, if, if Public Works will be able to get in there with trailers and things like that, and then the, the, I know they're not, I don't think they're called, maybe, well, maybe they are hearsees, but the vehicles that would deliver the caskets and things like that to the cemetery, would they be able to traverse with signs if signs were installed?
Right, so our Public Works Department would be the ones installing the signs to place things in a way that would prohibit them from taking care of the cemetery would, wouldn't make sense. They'd be placed in a way. We, I spoke with the foreman today as well, and they have to take trailers in for mowing equipment. It's not just, they park on the side of the road and drive a mower all the way down. There's tractors and things that use those roads as well. I couldn't imagine they'd be placed in a way that would prohibit the existing access.
Anyone have any questions for, for Megan? I thank you very much for responsiveness on this. I don't know if you had, did Rob, did you have one? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much for responsiveness on this. I just, I would, I heard from people, they haven't had a chance to, other than the emails they sent into us, I think a couple of, I think one or two were copied to everybody, and one came into me. I took the time, I drove, our cemetery is beautiful. I drove through it over the weekend with my son, and then I drove through the cemeteries in Bangor where there are, this is Mount Hope, and there's kind of the, I think there's the older planned section of Mount Hope, and then there's another section across the street, and they have a row of signs. I assume the signage would be done alphabetically with the flowered names or something like that where it makes sense, right? So people would be able to follow. But the, they have tree names at the, at the cemetery in, across from where Mount Hope is, and it makes sense. You can see the graph, the grids and things like that. So I don't know what the will of the council is based on the, on the, you know, the input that we've gotten. I don't feel like the community members, community members who maybe would have liked to engage in this discussion, maybe feel like they haven't had a chance, if, if given that, I, I would entertain, I would, I'd be inclined to maybe give those, they weren't able to come today because of travel and things like that. I, I would like to give people the chance to be heard who maybe object to the idea of having signs there, but at the same time, I could see why others may, we may want to just proceed too. So, but we have not, I mean, and I guess the point is, I like the idea of the process having clean, and we're new, right? So I mean, I, so the prior councillors were part of the conversation. I like the idea of it being able to have a start point. People can follow along, then we can point to a process where this is how we got to where we are today. This is why we're making a decision today, and not everyone may agree with it, but at least there was a process that people could participate in. But we don't do that clearly all the time. Like, you know, we had, we had a parent send us an email about bus safety. We had a committee meeting, and now we're, you know, now we have a plan, and that's a harder thing, you know what I mean? That moved pretty quickly, and without a, you know, it wasn't like there was a committee meeting, there wasn't an order on a council agenda directing the staff to do something, but you could follow along methodically. So I'm a, a couple different minds on it. I would, out of an abundance of responsiveness to the people who weighed in, consider maybe tabling this for a month and seeing if they want to join us at a committee meeting discussion, but at the same time, if, if others want to move ahead on it, I can understand that too. So I won't have a motion, but if someone wants to offer one.
Well, I would just say, I really appreciate the way you laid out the timeline by which you did this process and gave time for public input in a number of different ways, making sure that this was advertised. I mean, I think it's unfortunate when people sort of come to understand that the process has already been happening too late, but I also want to do recognize that I think there was plenty of opportunity for public engagement on this, and I do appreciate the work you did, Megan, not to say that you don't.
Oh, I do, absolutely.
I do know you do.
I think the naming part worked out fine.
Yes. No, I think the, the results here are great. I'd be fine moving forward with it myself, but I am sorry that the, the people who reached out to us didn't get a chance to engage or learned about it a little late.
Yeah, the one question I had, which was brought up via email, and I, do we have the authority to do this? Because that was the one concern brought up via email. I counsel, do we have the authority to name these paths or roadways?
I would, I believe that we do, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me to refer to it, and I don't know how much work, you know, we didn't ask the town attorney. Cornell, what do you think? You know, we're not, you're not staking your job on this answer, but...
Yeah, this is the town cemetery, right?
Yeah, right.
Then I'd say the council has the authority to name.
Then, assuming we have the authority to do it, which it sounds like we do, I appreciate, you know, the, the concerns that have brought up, but it, this seems like there's been plenty of time and there's been a, a process that's, that's been followed. So I would agree with Rob, and just let's not prolong this anymore and, and do it.
Is that a motion?
I would move to move ahead with this item. I think that the timeliness of spring is a great time to make our signage clearer for folks who frequent the cemetery, and this seems like a great thing to move forward with to me.
And I'll second it.
Can I just ask for one clarification? You explained, I know at the committee meeting, a lot more about the process, and I know we need to move along for time, but what I can't remember is, I know there was an extensive process about the naming, and it was put out on signs that people in town should know it was happening, and it went to, I believe, like the senior coffee group and the Historical Society and quite a few other places. Can you or, or anyone else tell me, was there like a public meeting about it? Like, it was on a committee meeting agenda that we were considering renaming this that happened like a year ago or something?
When I looked back to find information on council meetings, I, there was evidence of a discussion happen, happening publicly, but at the time I was brought into the project, like a, part of it had been discussed in the March-April time, and I wasn't brought in until around the summer. So it doesn't, didn't appear that there was an official order of sorts for this, but I was given direction by the town manager to, to do this part of the process.
Sure, but it showed up on the agendas then, a year ago spring, that it was a discussion about naming streets in the cemetery. If someone had been following council agendas, is my point. Would they in fact have been able to tell that we were discussing this? Does anyone know?
I think so. I have a recollection of it, but it hasn't been a year, so.
Okay, that's my concern, just in terms of whether public really had a way to know, was it on an agenda? And not that you didn't, I mean, your process was great, but just was it on a council agenda somewhere? And we believe it was? Okay, thank you. Cornell?
I don't know it was on the agenda. It's my understanding there was a discussion, but I, I can't say that it, there was an agenda item to discuss it.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, it's a tough. Miss Augustine? Augustine, how are you? Welcome. We're just now talking about the cemetery issue. Would you like to have public comment for us on the naming of the cemetery signs?
I will.
Okay, let's, let's take a minute. Could we table this until next, okay? We'll table this so you can catch your breath, and do you, like, water or anything like that?
Oh, fine.
Okay, so we'll table this now. Megan, thank you very much. And again, I appreciate the work that you've done in the Historical Society, and thank you. Thanks, Leo. We'll next. Thank you. Yeah, we'll take up Order 2458, which is an order authorizing the expenditure up to $7,000 from the council contingency account for Arts of Palooza 2024, and to seek requests for proposals from a community organization or event planner to organize the event. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment between now and 6:30? Kami, Connor? Should we do public comment first? No, no, it's an agenda item. Every time we have an agenda item, we're willing to recognize the public, so come on up. Thanks. Is the microphone on?
Yes, it is now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Connie Carter. I live on Winter Haven Drive in Orno, and I so appreciate the town council's interest in Arts of Palooza and the, all the discussion that's happened around it, and I did send a, an email to all council members today, sorry it was so late, saying that as we have talked as a board, we have, we are planning to dissolve Stillwater Community Arts as a nonprofit, because we've gotten to that point where it just seems like we're lacking the volunteers, the support, and all of, we're tired, kind of, I think. And while I am thrilled that the town wants to kind of pick this up, there are a couple things that we really feel are, is important for us, and one is that as we dissolve Stillwater Community Arts, that we also dissolve Arts of Palooza as a name. Because whatever happens from this point on will be what, what you all or whoever comes next to think about how the arts are supported and showcased in our community will be different, because we're not doing it anymore. So I think that's the biggest, I think it's wonderful that you all are interested in supporting, and I hope that out of all this discussion, and it's been kind of murky and messy, I realize that we come to a place with the town of Orno that we are a community that supports the arts, and I think we are, and I guess we also want you to know that we are more than happy to help in that way in some way, to give you, you know, feedback, or if you have questions about what worked and what didn't work, we're very happy to, to help.
I would just say that we would be so happy to connect you with all of those artists and everyone that's done Arts of Palooza, and certainly super grateful for the support that the town has given to Arts of Palooza, and it's just that, I mean, we looked back on our minutes, because as we've done this, we've like learned some legal things, right? So we looked back at our minutes, and we were like, oh, we started with a board of 15, and now we have a board of five, six, five, six, right? And so it's just, just time for us to like, kind of do some other things, but thank you guys so much.
Would you like to identify yourself, ma'am?
Well, I'm, thank you, Leo. Kami Carter, Orno. Page please.
Thank you both.
And now for something completely different. Sam Coons, I live on 29 Mainwood Avenue. I just want to acknowledge the work that these two, and many other people, of course, contributed to this, but I was fortunate enough to witness this from the inception. I saw many meetings around my dining table, around Connie's out at camp. I saw the ideas. I saw the work. I saw the, the backpedaling on some things, the new approaches. I didn't think it would happen, which was an error in my thought that anything these two decide to do is going to happen. They'll make it happen. I remember the first Arts of Palooza, 2011. My brother was up from Chester, Connecticut with his two sons, who were much younger at that time. Obviously, it was 2011, and math is my specialty. And it's a large, Chester, Connecticut, it's a large town. It's a bedroom community for Manhattan, for Hartford, for New Haven. And I remember Justin, who was maybe 11 at the time, you know, and 12, and he said, yeah, this is amazing. This is such a small town, but look at the sense of community. And it was beautiful. It was a rainy day. You know, there was color everywhere. There was music everywhere. People were out, engaged, interacting, and happy. And I think that was the first time I really saw the potential of Orno as, as what it can be and what it can celebrate. So I don't, that said, I don't think people have any idea the amount of work it took to make this happen. I've been reading some of the comments on the, in the Facebook post. Thank you for posting that, by the way. It's important. I'm not sure who did it. Somebody did put the agenda in, but there's clearly passion to support this. The amount of work is incredible. I think you're incredibly fortunate to be, to be handed basically, you know, simply by attending it in years past and participating, Rob, you know? If, if you get a chance to see Rob play, do it, you know? Say that was, that was a hell of a good time. And, but I think you're, there's a skeleton there, you know, so no matter what happens and what you call it and what you decide to do with this, you've been given a gift to have this. I mean, don't screw it up, okay? This is one of the best things about this town, and I'm passionate about it. I love that, how excited my daughter gets about this, how excited my relatives, you know, if they can come to it. My brother, he still talks about it, you know, he's just amazed, because it's like, oh, this little cute college town in Maine, right? Which is kind of how a lot of people in Connecticut feel about us, but it's not true. We're much more than that, right? But I just want to acknowledge that, and I've been thrilled to be part of it, at least, you know, managing different sites and that sort of thing. I was really lucky. But I just want to make sure you, it's acknowledged how much work they put into this. I, I really don't think people have a clue. And so with that, thank you for your time. Thank you, Kami and Connie.
Any, anyone online, Pete?
No hands raised online.
Oh, sorry.
No, not at this time.
Okay. Council discussion?
Well, like I say, in line with what's been requested, perhaps some edit or amendment to the order would be to change it from, right now it's listed as order authorizing the expenditure up to $7,000 from the council contingency account for Arts of Palooza 2024. Perhaps we could say for in, an arts festival to be named in 2004, or something to that effect. Somebody can wordsmith that better, but just to honor that request.
Is that a, is that a motion?
Yeah, I guess that would be me moving, that we make that amendment.
I would second that.
Is that what you need? Yep. For the discussion on the motion, on the, on the amendment to the motion?
I think my only question is just for clarity, you know, for the public, can we write something that would say, and I'm just taking a look, but council contingency account for, it's primarily been a music festival, correct? And I think that's who we already have contact with, are primarily musicians, so. I mean, I think realistically, we may want to say... I mean, I think realistically, we may want to say music festival and just to be accurate to what we likely already have contacts for, or perhaps music and arts festival. Performing arts festival, that sounds great. Performing arts festival, perhaps something that makes that clear. Thanks.
Would the uh would the mover of the amendment be willing to accept that change?
Yes.
And the seconder? Okay. You got what you need? You're way better at notes than I. Thank you. Any further council discussion?
Yeah, I guess um just just hearing all of that. Thank you both, all of you, Sam. I'm sure you're involved as well. What's that? Yeah, I passed I passed a bucket a time or two. Uh, just back to, I think, what I said when we talked about this, I I mean, this feels, I don't want to I want to be cognizant of what was just said, that this is a ton of work. And we're in, I feel like we're in the eleventh hour. We're now not going to be Arts of Palooza. And I just wonder if we would consider, like, maybe it doesn't happen this year and this is the rebuilding year to figure out what does the two point O, which was kind of what was shared from Connie originally. I I I feel like we're we're ringing the fire bell and I think we're just running into this full force without without really putting probably the thought and effort that needs to be put into it. So I'm it's for that reason, I I don't think we should be doing this. So I just want to share my take.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council Baker?
I I think events like this are what makes Orano a great place to live and and I, you know, as as somebody who's has been to these, you know, Arts of Palooza and others, I I think it's, you know, phenomenal. I I agree with Leo, though, i- in some respects, that this seems to be reactionary um in that I I don't know is you know, our our fiscal year, you know, ends here in another couple of months. And so I don't think that, you know, this is something that that we have to budget for now. And because i- it'll be, you know, a lot of work and and I don't think that or or I'm envisioning something that's not just an arts festival, you know, something that could be a combination of, you know, Orano days or, you know, we had the lights on on Main Street, a combination of of everything. So, you know, I I I would be in favor of putting a a line item in this coming year's budget to to help sponsor something to this extent. But I I I, yeah, I I I believe it's a little, you know, reactionary now to say, let's try to recreate Arts of Palooza when it doesn't sound like that that that's possible. So.
If I could respond, yeah, I've been thinking about this a little bit differently and I certainly hear what uh my colleagues are saying, but uh to me, we're not promising to recreate Arts of Palooza. We're putting out a call for applications for people who are passionate about the arts in our community to to come to us with new ideas. And we're making a commitment to um to support the arts. Out of not a huge going to break the bank budget amount, this is within our contingency fund. So to me, it feels um worth it to be proactively supporting the arts at this moment. And I hope we also will have time during the budget cycle to be discussing it. That's how I'm looking at this particular decision. And if we don't get applications that we like and feel like funding at this moment in time, then we don't fund any. And we'll see what else bubbles after the budget cycle. That's how I'm thinking about it.
Council of Marx.
Yeah, I think Sonia said most of what I was going to say, but I think it's important to note that we do have the money in the budget that Cornell told us what we have in our contingency fund. And we can, as a council, choose to spend it on this. So it's it's in the budget if we choose to do it. And I agree, we'll get applications or we won't. And we'll look at the quality of those applications and then we'll make a decision as a council whether it makes sense to move forward. I did hear some comments from fellow counselors last um meeting on this, just about the cost and whether we should be spending the money. So I did run those figures and um I didn't run them for exactly seven thousand, but I ran them for ten thousand. And if, you know, for an average person with a two hundred thousand dollar house, that would be about three dollars that they would be being charged for this event. So since only seven thousand, it would be under three dollars per the average taxpayer, which seems real, real cheap to me for the quality of this event and what it brings to our town. Thank you.
I guess I would respond to that, that we can do that with every single little project that comes along and separate it out from the eighteen million dollar, twenty million dollar budget. I don't I don't think that separation separate, I guess, we could separate anything out and it looks relatively small compared to everyone's tax bill. But we have a lot, I mean, we have the, you you can't, I don't think that's a legitimate way to be budgeting personally.
I guess I would just say it was brought up that way at the last meeting, which is why I followed up with the actual numbers. I didn't bring it up. Another counselor did to say, hey, this is money we'll be spending. So I wanted to know how much money. And I actually do think we should look at this for every item we think about. I think it's a useful chart to have in front of us when we're making decisions. You know, what's the value we're getting versus what's the tax impact on people? I'd like to be doing that for just about every decision we make. So thanks.
No, would I please, Council Larway?
Yeah. Bye Connie.
Thank Connie.
Let's say, one, I do appreciate all the work that's gone into it and I think Sonia said most of, I think, what I'm thinking. And I also do appreciate that framework, Sarah. I do think it's interesting, sort of. Leo, I don't have really an opinion one way or the other on whether or not that's a legitimate way to look at it. I think it's an interesting metric. Regardless, I think it does also get the town a lot of bang for its buck, considering how much stimulation it brings to local businesses. I it just seems like it's really worth not committing to funding every year. But I think it's something that communities come to expect, at least for this year. Well, as I think uh some of us have already said, I think it's worth investing in this year to keep it uh going. If somebody comes in with a proposal that we think and they feel like, if if we feel that they're competent and capable of taking it on. You know, I think it's worth at least seeing, trying, but I appreciate where you're coming from.
Council of Powers.
Yeah, I'd like to see Music Palooza keep going. But um and yes, Leo, I I understand um what you're saying. I um think if we, if a vendor comes along, like this is how we can do it and with the stuff that we have, let's make it happen, then I'm more than happy to spend the money this year, but not necessarily make a commitment into the future until we've had much future discussion on it. But I'd like to see it happen.
With that um interim town manager Cornell Knight, so we would do, we talked about the timing of this, right? It was vote tonight, have ten days for proposals, responses to the RFP. So the RFP would go out on the the website, the Facebook page. Pete, we're talking to you, right? So it would go out broadly, you know, we'd try and make people aware of it throughout the community, see what comes back. And then we'd decide at our meeting on the twenty second, is that what we discussed? Is that our next?
I think it was for the twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth? Okay. I don't know that, yeah, we would make a decision to fund, just like the mini grant kind of approach, right? We would have a conversation. That's not a, the twenty ninth is a council committee meeting with budget overview.
Yeah, the twenty second is likely to be a special meeting also.
Okay.
Because of the sewer.
Oh, that's right.
Issue, but um I thought we were talking about ten days out and then review, which would put it roughly the twenty ninth.
Okay, so we'd be pushing it from there. Did we have anything else? I'm sorry. Yeah, Sam? Sure. Yeah, why don't you pop up if you don't mind? Thank you.
Um, yeah, hi, Sam Coons again. Um, just a quick thing, given the short nature, that's a really valid point. Doesn't it doesn't necessarily have to be the whole hog. This could be a patch kind of thing. Because my God, Arts of Palooza happened in twenty twenty, okay, during COVID. They were able to come up with a plan quickly, you know, and make make that happen. So I don't think it necessarily has to be like this, take twelve months worth of work to put it in. I mean, that does take a lot of work, but I think there might be a way to do this without having to, you know, whatever, you know?
Do we lose, do we lose, um, I mean, our our artists kind of circling this fifteenth of June on their calendar? Or if we if we had to push it to the, you know, the twenty second of June or? Yeah. Annoyingly early this year, unfortunately. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it would be more about um and we were hoping to do this, like emailing all the artists and saying, here's what's going to happen, right? Like we moved to live as a nonprofit, but people defer to, you know, if you want to be a part of it, please talk to us.
But if a respondent came back to us and said, we we could do it, but we think we ought to do it at the end of June instead of the middle of June, yeah, that's fungible.
I think that may help you recruit people too, instead of saying, oh, my Christ, you know, I have, you know, twelve months worth of work to do in three weeks. So.
Yeah. So that would be something we'd want to add to the RFP that we're open to the date. Is that some if people, okay?
Can I ask, can I ask on the RFP, um, you know, I we've heard a a potential amount that we are willing to fund. How is this RFP going to read? Like, is it going to say a certain amount that we're willing to pay for someone to run this event or is it asking people for to give us their amounts or what is it going to say, Cornell? And would it say hours? People are expected, I mean, Connie gave us an estimate of the hours that she thought it would take to put something together. I feel like if an amount is there, some hours need to be there so people realize. But if none of that's there and it's just a blank slate, that's a different thing. How are we envisioning this?
I I was envisioning Dan was going to give me a sample RFP to to put out and we'll have staff gladly edit, but I would suspect that it would say the amount that we're willing to, you know, what the order is um to apply to the organizing.
And I'd be happy to take input from people on the draft of that kind of thing. Yep.
So a- a- again, I, you know, think the events like this are are what make Orano good and I, you know, in some in in support. But this conversation, it it suggests to me like we are trying to, we're we're trying to fund an organization that doesn't exist anymore, to put on a vent that doesn't exist anymore. So I I know it's going to pass and and that's great, but it just, it seems like we're spinning our wheels to create something that doesn't exist anymore.
I guess I just want to say that I've already been approached by some organizations in the state who do this kind of work and are interested in potentially organizing event in Orano. So I don't think it's not, I don't think it's true that there aren't organizations that do this and people who do this who might be interested in creating something. And I think it's okay that we don't know exactly what it'll be. We'll look at the quality of the proposals. Um, but I would say that if a financial figure is going to be there, it, you know, might be nice to include the fact that we're not expecting a million hours of work for that, um, for the idea of what we're expecting.
And and it it would also make sense to break that down, I think, the way it had seen it written at some point, two thousand for the organizer and five thousand, right? That so so just to get that out there, to not follow this order, just to say seventh, hey, we're putting this out for seven thousand and someone comes along and says, yeah, I'll do that for seven thousand and nothing to do with paying paying uh artists or something.
Yeah, but we'll have to assess that quality, the RFP, as as we review them too, in terms of that, those kinds of details. So.
So are you saying there is flexibility that somebody could come on along and say, it'll cost me four thousand and then that would leave me with three thousand to pay artists? That is that open to entirely what people would come forward with?
So, given that we don't have a draft RFP to vote on tonight, my, I I think voting on the concept and then we'll have, we'll get to have a final vote on on actual things once there's an RFP and proposals, right? So.
We'll have to, we'll be able to approve the proposals. We're not going to have time to bring an RFP back to wordsmith it as a council.
Yeah, all right. Maybe it does make sense to hash it out now.
So Leo is suggesting that it should say that we are funding seven thousand dollars, two thousand for the organizing, five thousand for stipends for the performers, correct?
If that's that's.
And I'm suggesting that it also say expecting about a hundred hours of work from the organizer or something along that lines, if we have an estimate of hours from Connie, because I don't want people to think that they're being asked to work two thousand dollars to do, you know, two thousand hours of work. I mean. Just I realize I just quoted wrong. Connie, I think, said ninety hours of work was the estimate.
Point of, I guess, clarification on that, that that means we have staff doing stuff.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that, you know, there is not been, there there wouldn't be an expectation on my part that staff would do any of the organization for the delivery of the event. I mean, they'll be, help us get the RFP out, help support the council in its effort to find a vendor. And then um and, you know, spread the word and, you know, that kind of work, but not not actually do the work of the the promotion of the event or the, you know, the the administration of the event.
And so would on the insurance front, do we know how that would that would work? Like, is that our event if we do, if we do it in this fashion and does that our doesn't our insurance cover that? Because I mean, that's probably one of your costs that you just mentioned. Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion? We have an amendment on the table that we need to act on first and then we'd act on a whole motion soon, depending on how the amendment, okay? So the um, the motion on the table is the amended language presented by Councilor Larway. Um, all in favor? So we do need a roll call. I see five in favor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And two opposed.
Five in favor and two opposed. Ed, okay, so the, thank you, um, Council Berthel. The order is an order authorizing the expenditure of up to seven thousand dollars from the council contingency account for for a performance, performing arts and musical music festival and to seek requests for proposals for a community organization or event planner to organize the event.
Do you want to speak who? I think we talked about um saying who voted which way because the camera doesn't pan out.
Yeah, okay. So in terms of the the First Amendment, we had a vote of five to two. So we had a Council Larway, Council Berthel, Council Marx, Council Demerit and Council Powers in favor. Councilor Baker and Councilor Kenny was was opposed to the amendment. The order in front of us now is an order authorizing the expenditure of up to seven thousand dollars from the council contingency account for a performing arts music festival and to seek requests for proposals for a community organization or event planner to organize the event. All those in favor? All those opposed? Here with a vote of five to two with Council Larway, Council Berthel, Council Marx, Council Demerit, Council Powers in favor and Councilor Baker and Councilor Kenny opposed, the order passes. So thank you and we'll work with staff on on that. Go back to Riverside. Yep. Um, I would like to um bring the Riverside Cemetery order, order number uh twenty four fifty six back to the table. Yep.
For the record, we have um Councilor Berthel with Councilor Baker seconding that motion, so that's still on the floor.
Yep, and that motion is an order approving the Riverside Cemetery as presented by staff for the naming of the um for the naming of the lanes and within the cemetery, road names within the cemetery. And we have a member of the public who'd like to participate. And could you please uh state your name and um where you live in town? Or where you live? Augustine, is your mic on? Is the green light on your mic? Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much and thank you for joining us.
I uh worked for the cemetery for thirty two years. I worked for the town for thirty eight in total. I know more about that cemetery than anybody in this town or working or residents. I'm not here to cause problems. I just want to let people know more information about the cemetery. One thing, the roads are very narrow up there. And you have some large trucks and some large trailers and some of that coming in there on daily pieces from landscapers, vault trucks to everything else. You put uh separate signs on the corner of those roads, they're going to be run over and knocked over. There's a section up there that belongs to Old Town. And the way they do things is basically people come in, ask them where people are buried up there. They tell them where they are. There's only three roads there, three small roads. Nine times out of 10, they always came up and asked me where the hell this place was, if I could show them where their loved ones are buried. A few other things is there are a lot of stones up there. And there are a few lots up there that don't have stones or markers of any kind. If you don't, if you just go up there and somebody says, well, they're on this road, they're still not going to find them. The uh, there's also a lot of lots up there that people paid. Uh, somebody in Orno gave them the money for it and somebody in Orno bought it for them. So the people who bought it for Orno has to have their name on that lot. But the stones are different. So there's not a way for a person just to go up there and try to find the lots. Uh, Shelley and them know nothing about the cemetery. They can go to the, to the records and say, okay, yeah, they're buried here. But that still isn't going to get them where they need to go. Uh, the only other thing I could think of was putting a kiosk up there with a copy of the maps. So when they go to Shelley and say, well, okay, well, I'm looking for this person. And Shelley can give them the numbers, the range and map numbers and lot numbers. And they can go to that map with those numbers and find on the maps where the burials are. But uh, just to put signs up there and aiming the roads, it's not going to work. There's going to be more confusion than anything else because the way the cemetery is set up. You have uh three roads side by side up in the front there and you can tell them, okay, you can go down this road and you can go down this road. The lot may be here, but they're still not going to find it without a lot of work and running around that cemetery. The only, if you're not going to be putting somebody up there so they can talk to a person and have them bring them where the lots are. You know, it's not going to help by naming the roads. And uh the uh, the complex, the uh, the cemetery is pretty complex. There have been times where I had the map and looking for lots because there was no stones there. I had to determine where that lot was. And uh it's just, it's not, it's not going to work. It's going to cause more problems because you're going to have people up there replacing signs all the time because of the, the way people drive on those roads. Uh, they're very narrow, the the widest one up there is 10 feet. All the rest of them around nine feet. The gear around the corner is very sharp. And it's just going to cause more damage and cause more problems.
Thank you for joining us. Anyone have any questions? Yep, thank you. So the order um before us is an order approving the Riverside Cemetery as presented by staff. We have a motion and a second to proceed with that. Unless there's any further discussion, we'll have a vote. All those in favor?
Can I, uh, I think I would like to just have a brief moment of discussion, mostly to say thank you so much for, for coming in and sharing with us. It really helps to see it from a different perspective and I, I'm going to vote in favor of this because it was brought to us by another person who frequents the seminary and, or excuse me, the cemetery and thought it would be helpful. So I think it's worth trying, but if you're right and, you know, the, the signs get hit, then maybe we can reevaluate how we do that in future. And I really, I really appreciate you sharing. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Hmm, yeah. Hmm, yeah. That's, I think that's all I had to say, but mostly just thank you.
I would second that, second that. I appreciate you coming in, Tony, sharing that with us and, and that does seem like a realistic thing to be concerned with, that maybe as, as they're putting them up, uh, we, we can try to figure out a way to have them out of the way. It makes sense, narrow roads, big trucks having to come in there. I can totally see that happening, so uh appreciate the heads up on that and, and whether, hopefully it doesn't cause more confusion. Uh, it, it could, uh, but uh, I think I'm probably in support of it as well, but I appreciate you coming in.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of order 2456, an order approving the Riverside Cemetery as presented, signs as presented by staff? Two, three. We have six councils voting in favor. I'm going to vote opposed. Um, so that was uh Council Powers, Baker, Kenny, Marks, Bertholz, Larway, um, voting in favor and Council Demerit opposing. Thank you for the discussion. Thank you very much for the work that staff did with, on this and thanks for coming in. Okay. Who'll get next? Oh, order 2459 is an order appointing the comprehensive uh plan committee members and that, those, Council Larway, would you like to read off the, the appointees?
Yes, um, so the members of the comprehensive plan committee, um, which will be getting its work underway soon enough in collaboration with staff to make sure that all goes according to plan and with our town planner Isabel. Um, the members will be Bill Ruck, Lisa Buck, Judd McIntosh, Ashley K. Schwartz, Jeff Gordon, myself, Rob Laraway, as town council liaison, Gail White, Dennis Cross, Lauren Tool, uh Eric De Silva, Catherine Thibodeau, Laura Mitchell, Meredith Diamond representing the RSU and Lori Sedelko as a representative for the University of Maine.
Do we have a motion?
Ooh, so moved.
Moved by Council Bertholz, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Baker. Any discussion?
Well done, Rob, reaching out and getting a, a great, a great lineup, so appreciate that effort.
I'm excited to get this work underway with a lot of people who care a lot about this town and have a vision for seeing it into the future.
Okay, all those in favor of order 2449, appointing the members of the comprehensive plan committee, will signify by raising their hand? And that's a unanimous vote? I don't have to, okay, great. The next order is order 2460, an order approving an ordinance amendments to the town of, uh, Town of Orno Code of Ordinances, Chapter 28, personal article, personnel, Article Four, Working Environment, Section 2891, adding Section D, potential liability claims of harassment or discrimination. I was, I'm going to offer a motion to refer this back to the Finance and Operations Committee while we continue to work on uh some of the issues that were raised in our public hearing in March on this matter. Could I get a second?
I second sending this back to committee.
That's Bertholz. All in favor of referring this back to the committee? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much for that and thank you for uh staff support for helping us continue to, to um work through those concerns that were raised during our public hearing. And next we have order 2461, an order appointing the counselors to chair the following town council committees. That would be Finance and Operations, Jacob Baker, Community Development, Matthew Powers and Comprehensive Plan Committee, Robert Larway. I guess we kind of have to get that last one in there.
Uh, to be clear, that comprehensive plan, I mean, maybe we can make the motion that I can call for an amendment, but I think that committee would be the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee, implementing the comprehensive plan developed by the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Okay, thank you very, yep, all right, so um I guess first we need an order, we need a motion, sorry, so is.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we have an order and.
And I, probably that'll, a move that we amended to change the name of the Comprehensive Plan Committee to Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee. It's always takes forever to say.
Well, thank you for sticking with us and getting, um, is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kim? Is it town manager?
Finance and Administration, right?
It's Finance and Operations. It's the way we've done it for years and years. It's a combination from the charter of the Finance and Administration Committee and the Operations Committee. Charter asks us to have both of those and to the best of my knowledge, since I've been following council meetings, we've always had one that's combined. I don't know that we've amended our charter for that, but that has been practice for.
In, yeah.
That has indeed been our practice and I have wondered how uh, you know, whether that is the most appropriate thing we can do and whether we should think about how that interfaces with the charter, but that has been our operating procedure for many years.
So um, in terms of conversation, the section 230 of special committees and the Orno ordinances has standing committees. And at the commencement of the municipal year or soon thereafter is possible, there shall be chosen the following committees. Each committee to consist of such, such members of the council as the town council may designate. There's Finance Administration, there's Community Development and then there's Operations. So I think what we ultimately need to do is, is look at section two of our, of our ordinances with some, with an eye on updating. And I, I had entertained the idea of bringing an order in, making it clear that we were combining these committees for the um, for the municipal year. But I, I think the better, I think the better approach is to go and, and take a look at the ordinance itself and, and take the time to do it right. And, and have, and combine the committee into one, so.
Agreed, I flagged this on the policy.
No, we'll have to, I never get to do what I want exactly when I want to do it. I have to, you know what I mean? So we'll have to have a hearing, we'll have to have a committee, we'll refer this to committee, we'll put it on the committee agenda. We'll order a public hearing, we'll have a public hearing and then we'll change it, but I, I think it's probably part of a bigger conversation about the, the ordinance.
Which committee do we refer to?
Right, well, it would be nom, it would be the nominations, evaluations and Council Policy Committee that we'll also discuss at our next committee meeting. Um, that I, um, Vice Chair Marks and I have been discussing in terms of how do we wrap our arms around all these things? Like tonight, we, you know, we, we nominated a bunch of people to appointments. We have to talk about how we evaluate our new, our incoming town manager, how we evaluate our own council, um, you know, with the, with the input from the community and then also our policies as a council. Um, you know, all these things from, you know, you now have 90 days to get your foyer training done. Um, and you know, as, as newly elected members of the council, all the, all the many things that we have to kind of keep track of as a council um, to stay in compliance with state laws and with our own ordinances, so.
Um, Dan, I just want to say if we can just be sure that we get it on an agenda soon because I did flag this issue um last spring that, you know, our ordinance said that these were two committees, but they're actually one and I flagged it a year ago and, you know, here we are. So I just want to be sure that we get it on a date for when we're going to talk about that, so if we can track that carefully.
Let's pick a date at the end of the meeting when we're talking about upcoming agenda items.
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Any um any more discussion on the appointments? We are, and we're just going to, we're going to acknowledge the fact that we're not adhering to the ordinance directly and we're not going to blame the clerk ever. All right, thank you. Um, okay, and we have a, we also have a, so let's get a, let's get a vote on the amendment offered by Council Larway. All those in favor of Council Larway's amendment? That's unanimous and let's get a vote on the order. All those in favor of appointing these council members to these committees, um, signify by raising your hand? First three, yeah, we don't have an appointment for the Environmental Committee, which is Nominations Committee, I'm sorry, yep. Excuse me, um, next up on our order is uh order 2462, order appointing Orno Town Council Liaisons to the following. Um, Town, Town Council Liaisons would be the Bangor Target Area Development Corporation, uh, Council Leo Kenny, Orno Historical Society, Council Sarah Marks, Town Council DEIB Committee, Matthew Powers, Orno Economic Development Corporation, Leo Kenny for a term expiring at the end of the 2025 municipal year and Orno Economic Development Corporation, Jacob Baker for a term expiring at the end of the 2027 municipal year. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Council Bertholz, second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Marks. Any discussion on this item? Uh, one thing I'd, I'd point out is we were, the Orno Economic Development Corporation's updating its bylaws, as, as I understand it, the bylaws, we had a good talk with um Jeff Jefferson. And as I understand the bylaw, you know, the bylaw said three counselors, but as we know from our experience as counselors, with the exception of, I guess, the plot lock, every time three of us get together, it's an open meeting, we all have to, we have to notice it and make sure Belinda's going to come. So this would allow us to, um, this would, this gets out of the logistical challenge of noticing a meeting every time the Orno Economic Development Corporation has a meeting because three councils are there. With that, um, could we uh get a vote on all those in favor of order 2462? Uh, that's unanimous, no opposition. So now we'll move to order 2463. Which is a resolve, right? Yeah, no, yeah, earlier today, just to, for any, because to clear up confusion for counselors, we got an email from me today. Um, we were going to take up, I, I raised the issue of having a couple of discussions tonight about um the establishment of a, a special council committee on nominations, evaluations and council policies. Uh, we're going to put that, we're going to talk about that at the end of our meeting and schedule that in our, at a committee meeting. And I had, I had one in there as well about making it clear that we're combining the Finance Administration and Operations Committee. We're going to have that as a committee meeting discussion about updating the ordinance. So now, order 2463, excuse me, resolve, 2463 is a resolve. The Orno Town Council endorses the Traffic Safety Education Enforcement Initiative developed in response to community, community member concerns about school bus safety and safety on the Route 2 corridor. The council appreciates the many steps staff has taken to address the safety concerns of Orno residents. We look forward to receiving and sharing the enforcement data that is developed as part of the Spring 2024 Traffic Safety Education Enforcement Initiative. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
Council Larway's moved it. Can I get a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Council Bertholz, can we hear from Chief Merrill about um, about this plan? Maybe provide us with some context and.
Good evening. Surprise is it up here? Uh, so Dan Merrill, Police Chief, so in response to the committee meeting we had last week, um, we talked about a plan that I was going to develop or that we worked on developing and implementing for the end of this budget cycle. So basically what I did was I created a, a plan where I'm going to have um some of our officers conduct four hour details. Um, mostly they're going to be Monday through Friday because part of the details are going to be in response to the past bus concerns that we've had. So there'll either be details that are conducted in the morning when the buses are out or in the afternoon when the buses are out. During times like next week when school's on break, you'll probably see them just being um special patrols where they're focusing on something specific, whether it's distracted driving, speeding, um pedestrian safety, something to that effect. So, you know, as the school year goes on, we're going to kind of augment, but it's something that I'd spoken to council about, a way that I can get some high visibility, high visibility patrol for the spring, um, and let people know that we're out there. Um, and we've already shared some stuff on social media and I think the town has shared it for bus safety. Um, we've been working with our community liaison, Ed Leskey riding the bus last week. Um, so him and I have had some conversations about what, what that looked like and how we can do better in our safety response. So basically from starting today through the remainder of the fiscal year, I'll plan on doing four hour details. The goal is to try and do four, four, four hour details um throughout the week and come back to you with some results on how we did coming at the end of budget year.
Excellent. Anyway, I have a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll go last. Anyone have questions for Chief Merrill?
I, I think you already answered it. Thanks, Dan. Uh, I was going to ask if we are going to, I assume, be able to hear the results, whether it's warnings or tickets issued from, based on the, based on the efforts. And I guess mother, another quick one, I don't know, is there any anecdotal feedback from our officer riding the bus?
Yeah. I would say initially where we expected, where we were hearing from the committee meeting last week, Stillwater Avenue is one of our bigger concerns. And like I said, I think that that's one of the roads that we're going to have to really take an educational approach on because it's a four lane highway, state law says divided. So I think some people think where there's a center turn lane that could be construed as divided, you know, there will definitely be an educational aspect to that road in particular. Um, actually in speaking with her, we'd been told that pretty much the neighborhoods in general. Actually, in speaking with her, we'd been told that pretty much the neighborhoods in general, which is good to hear. The neighborhoods in general aren't an issue for the buses. It's mainly just the, the busier roadways, the, the main streets, the college abs, the Stillwater avenues, um, roads of that nature. So it actually kind of helps us from a enforcement standpoint. Like I said, we were able to shrink the area of focus a little bit to know that we don't necessarily need to focus on all of the neighborhoods because there's not the density of the consistency there. We need to focus on these spots.
Thanks.
Yeah. You said, no, Council Marks, go ahead.
I don't know. This could be the same question you have, but, um, I was curious. So, um, we got a little bit of feedback from the RSU. You got that email also. I don't know. Did that go to the whole council or did that just?
That was back to you and me.
Okay. So we got a little bit of feedback from the RSU, from the superintendent and from the chairman of the school board asking if these same patrols would also be able to be paying special attention to crosswalks because that's equally of a concern for them with as many students using crosswalks. So I also am remembering during the Route Two Corridor project discussion, um, we had community members saying, look, I would volunteer to be out there crossing crosswalks when those special patrols are out there. So is there some thought about working with some community volunteers so that in the hours these patrols are out there, there'd be extra bodies crossing crosswalks? So you could actually see what the response is to pedestrians in crosswalks at a higher, I don't know what the word is, concentration of numbers of times in that same four hour, you know, window?
I would say on its face, that sounds like a good idea. My concern from a public safety perspective is what happens if something happens to that person and I put them in that position to possibly be someplace where they wouldn't normally be. So I would prefer, so the purpose of this is to, these officers sole job for four hours is to just be a high visibility enforcement officer. They're not responsible for calls for service or anything like that. So I think that I would prefer to direct my staff in a way to say, if today is about pedestrian safety, then go sit at crosswalks and specifically look for violations of that nature. Because we've done that before. The police department's done that before where if we sit out here at the Camden National or the old Camden National Bank across the, across the street, um, we know that that's a, a popular crosswalk. If we sat down downtown somewhere across the street, um, at Circle K, that's a a higher use crosswalk and then enforce violations that way as opposed to even bringing in more people that can just, I don't want to put somebody's safety in jeopardy unintentionally. Good thought, but I'm not super comfortable with that.
That makes great sense. I just wanted to ask because a lot of people asked it during their Route Two Corridor meeting, so I appreciate it. Also appreciate, I think you defined for me, my next question was what does high visibility enforcement mean? And I think you maybe just said that that means those are officers who are not out on other calls during that time. Their job is to be highly visible, looking at these specific issues. Is that correct for the definition? Okay, thanks.
Yep. So like I said, the purpose of bringing them in is to be in a marked patrol car and just be out there stopping for a range of violations. Um, we talked about it in a staff meeting last week. We kind of set some expectations with our supervisors and said, this is what we're looking for. Um, and they were on board and they seemed to think the staff would really get behind this, so, um, I think it'd be something good. It could be a good push for the last twelve weeks or so in the budget year.
Any other questions? I, I have a couple. Um, and thank you for the engagement with the bus company. Do you have, is, there've been discussions about access to their cameras for invest, in their footage to investigate violations that they identify and could potentially report or?
I think that the conversation, I think that the conversation that we had at the committee meeting was actually very telling for me in that I learned some stuff about their process and they learned some stuff about our process. Like I, I didn't know ahead of the committee meeting last week that there was only one person that works a full-time job that has to pull that video.
Right.
So I think that there are logistical things that we learned at that committee meeting last week that we can move forward with to do better in getting the violations reported. Which just requires more consistent follow-up with Seer Bus and trying to get that contact person there to get his video when there is video. I know actually anecdotally, when Ed was riding the bus last week, one of the things I talked about in the committee meeting is he said, one of the cars that passed by the school bus in Stillwater Ave last week didn't have a front plate, so they got nothing. So that was one of the struggles that I talked about, right? When we talked about enforcement is if you don't have a front plate, you're basically just giving our officers a description of a car that could be one of twenty others that's driving on Stillwater Avenue at the same time. You know, without a front plate, you might narrow it down a little bit, but you got to be in the right place at the right time. Which these directed patrols would helpfully put us in that position where we're there. So that's the hope.
Well, I, I think, when I think about the, the safety things that we've heard from the Route Two Corridor discussion and, and the bus safety, and then you think about the community that we're in and the reality of the community we're in, given that we, you know, we're the, you know, the second youngest community. We have, we're the second youngest community in Maine, which means we have a lot of inexperienced drivers in our community. Many of them coming to Orno, you know, in the, in the fall for, to be with us hopefully for four or six or eight years. But just, they're new to the community. They've got things to learn about Orno and what our expectations are. I think we as a council, I'm going to speechify a little bit. I don't really have a question for you. I'm sorry. But we, we as a council have to think about, you know, enforcement, education and infrastructure. Um, the Route Two Corridor and, and we're starting to make progress on that. And I think we should think about intentionally speaking that way. We heard from Mitch Stone, our Economic Development Director, about the work we're going to do to change the timing on the lights so the crosswalks are safer in town. We, tonight, we approved print funding in our consent agenda. We approved a funding for printers in our cruisers and two speed signs that we'll be able to install on, on Route Two. We're doing this enforcement initiative. And I think as part of this enforcement initiative, we need to think, you know, how do we communicate this across our channels, you know, with the school department, with our channels that we control as a town and our partners at the university in terms of creating awareness around this? And I would like to see, and, and we're going to do, um, you know, we're going to finish the Forest Avenue, um, speed table, speed mitigation, um, projects this summer. Um, in an email I saw from, from Cornell today, it's on the list of things to finish. So we are taking a comprehensive look at safety in Orno. And I, I think we should speak with intentionally, intentionally about it. And I think in our budget conversation, we should talk about how do we, you know, we'll take what we learn from the data that we get from Chief Merrill and his team. But every August, you know, every April, how do we, you know, how do we think about intentionally having enforcement initiatives that really send a message that we have expectations around distracted driving, pedestrian safety, bike safety, bus safety in our community? So thank you for allowing me to jump on a soapbox and I really appreciate how, this was two weeks ago. We got an email from a constituent in Orno from her bus driver. And tonight we're endorsing a, a plan that's going to, going to make a big impact. And I'm, I'm really grateful and I thank the whole council and staff for all they've done and the people that brought it forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
That was my three minutes. So, all right. So we have an order in front of us, um, a resolve in front of us. All right. I move around when I get, thank you. Resolve. Twenty four sixty three, the town, the Orno Town Council endorses the Traffic Safety Education Enforcement Initiative. We've read it once. Can we get, um, all those in favor of, uh, this resolve? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, we are on to future agenda items, items of concern. Council Marks and I certainly have one to talk, anybody have any they want to talk about before Council Marks and I talk about?
I do. I have a question that, uh, in, in the event that, uh, a council member moves from town.
I'm sorry, what?
In the event that we, that a council member moves out of town, that we have to run an election, I'm curious, uh, from Shelley, our town clerk, what the timeframe is on, you know, on an election as far as papers and what, how long is required?
So not to put you on the spot, and also I'm the town councillor who might be moving out of town, but I've looked at the calendar and would not move away at such a time that I would trigger a special election. I'd like stick, stick around to make you not go through that. So I believe that it's six months. And, um, so if we're looking at a November potential special election date, then I think if I moved away after May fifth, we might be okay. But I promise I will double check this with you before I'm set a moving date.
So I was also thinking, we, we have a, a school budget that happened in June. That's what I was thinking about timeframe wise. So it wouldn't be a special election, but to get on that ballot, is it way over the?
It's too late.
It's already too late.
To get on a June ballot. Um, I would need to run a one hundred day nomination process. And I would definitely, if there is a councillor at the dais who suspects they're going to be moving, I would ask them as a courtesy to reach out to Cornell and Cornell will work with me and we'll get the state statute out and give you a timeline and what that looks like.
Hundred days speaks to my question. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, and of course, these are decisions that councillors make in their personal lives that impact their ability to serve and, and be residents of our community and, and have the utmost respect and discretion for councillors to make those decisions and keep us apprised of, of what they're doing and how they're doing it. So thank you for that. Any other, um, items of concerns or agenda items? I know Council Marks? Yeah. Let's talk about this. I would like to, um, I would like to get the, the fight, well, the finance administration's standing. I'd like to have at our next committee, our next committee meeting, sorry, is April, uh, we don't have a, a meeting on the fifteenth because, um, town officers are closed that day. It's Patriots Day, right? So April seventeenth, oh no, it's a planning board meeting. I'm sure they don't want, Phil doesn't want me to come in there for that. Twenty second. We can add, I would like to add time on the twenty second for us to discuss, um, begin to discuss uh, ordinance changes to, is it section two of our ordinances? Chapter two of our ordinances? And also to have a conversation about the, um, committee, a special committee regarding nominations, uh, evaluations for our manager and, um, council and, uh, council policies. And Cornell, are you traveling that week? Are you remote? That, is that the council meeting you're going to be remote for? And is that, given the budget time that we'd have, you know, given the time and wanting to get a, a meeting done in two hours? Um, and that we want to be done by seven thirty, does it seem feasible to you that we can work the agenda to fit a half an hour in for that discussion?
You're likely to have a, uh, executive session with legal counsel that night as well, which will, I'm guessing, take a half an hour.
Okay. And, but we, we'll need to be done that meeting at seven thirty for Passover. Is that what I see on the agenda? Passover begins to sundown at seven thirty PM. Okay. So we'll just want to, and that's why we start early. We start at, uh, four o'clock for that council committee meeting.
On the twenty second.
On the twenty second. Okay. So Council Kenny?
Yeah, related to this, are we intending to do three hour meetings every week? For some reason I thought we were at five to seven was sort of our block. I understand, I, I didn't even know that that changed on there, but you're, you said we start at four, just, you were thinking till seven thirty?
I'd say we have to be done at seven thirty. I don't say, I'm not challenging. I said we have to go to seven thirty.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. I, I wasn't clear because, because I think we were three hours last week. And I, and I just wanted to ver, clarify if I missed something that our intent is to be two hour meetings on Mondays, correct?
Yeah.
Still our intent.
Two hour intent, yeah. I, yeah, yeah. As long as I don't have a protein shake, I can go two, before a meeting, I can go two hours. I can sit here for two hours, but three hours is a long time. All right. So we'll do that for the twenty second. We'll have that conversation and, uh, we'll get that, get that, I'm excited about that work. It's important.
Where are we at tonight? Number eleven.
Town manager's report. I'm sorry if we stole your thunder on the, uh, the police safety initiative.
Yeah, you took that right off my list.
Yep.
In regards to the Webster Street, uh, sewer project, uh, the plan is to have the engineer redo the plans to move a sewer line off Peters Street, um, to avoid, uh, homeowners, some, uh, trees and trebbery issues. So she's going to move that, have those plans hopefully done by the fifteenth with the idea that it would come to the council for approval to go out to bid on the twenty second. In the event during that walk, we certainly did see some drainage issues between Pond and Hillside. And if the council decides that, uh, there is work to be done in, behind those houses on, uh, private property, then that could be added as a, uh, change order to the contract and not delay getting this, this, uh, project out. So that's the plan. And since it'll be a special meeting, it can be, uh, in order and approved.
Are you going to, are we going to? Did you say you're going to ask council if we want to do more drainage in those areas or I, I don't know where the?
Well, I, I would assume at a future meeting, we'll have a discussion about.
We bring Chris in for that or something like that?
To what?
We'd, we'd bring Public Works in for that discussion? So they, yeah, okay, good.
Yes. Um, I mean, we did see that, that there is some drainage infrastructure that was put in by the town years ago. There are no easements that I'm aware of. So there needs to be a little bit more discussion about that. But I just wanted to let you know that in the event you do decide, it won't preclude us if you decide to do that from adding it to the contract at a later date.
And the engineer will bring, the engineer is kind of tasked with kind of giving us ideas on that though, in terms of that firm or? I wasn't writing anything down, so I was, you know what I mean, right Dan?
We'll prepare a, an agenda item to have a discussion about it at a later.
Thank you very much. Yep. Sure. Anything? Okay. Any else in the manager's report?
Uh, just working feverishly on a budget.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions on that?
On the?
On the, uh, Worcester side?
As long as you're not going to ask how big the pipes are. All right. Council Kenny has a?
No, but I, I had, I had asked about, um, our Public Works capabilities and, and if we have that type of capability and it was responded back that we do, um, we don't necessarily have it in our schedule, obviously. Um, and my question, which I think Cornell was going to come back with, and, and maybe council has no appetite for this, but my, my thinking on this is that if it's lawns and, um, kind of tasks that could be done probably by somebody else, I, I'm, I'm looking to understand if, if our staff, which I've, we've been told can do this type of work. Uh, it's a one point three million dollar project. If, it seems like it could be a best use for our staff, knowing that they have the capability. We don't, we can, you can rent equipment and whatnot. I understand we don't quite have the equipment. I'm just wondering if, if there is a savings by putting our staff on maybe the hardest or the, the most complex type of projects. And even if, again, I don't know, I had asked to find out what else, what other things are in the way of having staff do this, which I think Cornell was going to come back to me, but I'm, I don't know if the rest of the council has an appetite to even understand this. But a one point three million, again, is, it's, it's a big, we're using five hundred thousand dollars of, um, of our reserves, uh, and that, that worries me going forward. So I'm just wondering if there's going to be, if there's a potential way that we could save money on this. Uh, I'd like to explore it personally.
I, I think if you want to get into the construction business, um, we don't have the equipment. I mean, they have the knowledge and the expertise to do things. They're putting in the sidewalks. And they know road construction and drainage. I'm not sure they can do water lines. So we'd have to have perhaps a contractor do that. Then we'd have, so we'd have two excavators up there with, um, trench boxing equipment, um, duplicate. So duplicate equipment, we'd have to rent equipment, we'd need more people. And then all that list of items that they're going to be working on, on projects would all be delayed because that's a significant.
Well, like that, that's, I guess, what I'm interested in understanding. What, what is that list? And, and how does it stack up to us spending this kind of money? And, and I think, I think the water district is, is not even in this. The water district is responsible for what's going to happen with their water lines, if I'm.
Yeah, but it would be one contractor. They're replacing water lines up there at the same time.
Right. So they're paying, their water district has their separate, that's, we don't, we don't even see that bill, correct? We're not, that's the, that's not included.
It would probably go through, we'd funnel through the town. They'd, they'd pay, it'd be separated out that they would pay their cost.
So of this one point three, that covers the water replacing those lines? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think that's separate.
Yeah, that's, I think so.
Separate, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just our cost, but their work would be included. So we've just got one contractor up there.
And I suppose it could be a, a conversation for the budget discussion, Councilor Kenny, if that's. Yeah, I suppose it could be a, a conversation for the budget discussion, Council Kenny, if that's something, I know it's something you, you care about, I, I saw that um. I know um. Our town manager responded in an email about ideas for the new manager and the new Public Works Director, um, in terms of. Potentially expanding the role of, of Public Works to take those kinds of things on, I think that's a, a policy and a, and a resource issue that we'd have, you'd have to bring forward and. I would certainly support you raising the issue and us having a conversation, but I don't know that. It's something we could do as part of this, I definitely don't want to delay this project for, for that. But. Anything else from um, future agenda items, items of concern, we do the town managers' report and public petitions, we don't have any, how do we even do a public petition?
That would be um, five residents in Orno would start a petition process, they would file it with me, I would certify it and bring it to the council if it was valid.
Okay.
Yep. It takes five and then they would have to go out and collect signatures.
Uh, so if someone wanted to do an ordinance or something like that?
Right, if they wanted to overturn, they want to introduce something to a ballot.
Yeah, okay, but if you want to petition us with your idea, just send us an email and we'll get back, okay, good, any public comments? Pete, anybody, um, anyone with their hands up online?
No hands up online at this time.
Okay, we're going to, um, the next, thank you Pete, very much for your work and your support of these meetings. Um, our next item, our executive sessions, I'd remind uh, the public that we have, will take no action following executive session, so the camera. And the public, um, public portion of this, the meeting will end at this time upon our um, motion to move into executive session. Can I get a motion and do, and under, we'll go into, we need a motion pursuant to one MRS, section four oh five, six A. Personnel matter to move into executive session, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? It's unanimous and we'll move into executive session, thank you to staff, thank you to the public, Augustine, thank you very much for joining us tonight.